Call the meeting of county council order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody. A optional prayer, Mrs. Law.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let us pray. God calls us to work for others and do His will. We serve with all our strength, Lord Jesus. We have been taught to love with all our hearts, soul, mind, and strength. We need to put in order of importance as Your will and how You wish us to be and things we enjoy. We need to use our strength to not compete with others, but treat our neighbor as ourselves, and not to neglect the need of others. Help us to keep Your commandments in our hearts and obey them. We ask this in the name of our Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Mr. Smith, roll call, please.
Mr. Anderson?
Here.
Mrs. Fatika?
Here.
Mr. Horton?
Here.
Mr. Leon?
Here.
Mrs. Law?
Here.
Mr. Rastetter?
Here.
Dr. Faust?
Here. Hearing of the public. Anybody that called ahead will have five minutes to speak on an issue of their choice. Anybody they were after would have three. Mr. Barnes called in, but I do not see him or do I hear him maybe approaching in the hall?
Mr. Chairman, I believe the agenda was advertised at 6:30 and 7 o'clock. No?
That was just a typo on the hard copy, but it was properly advertised at 5:00 P.M. Yes.
All right. I just thought it was a...I saw it on mine.
Yes.
So I thought, well, okay.
Anybody else from the public wish to come forward tonight? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve the minutes from the previous meeting?
Move through the minutes.
Moved by Mr. Law and seconded by Mr. Horton. Are there any changes or corrections to those meeting minutes? Mr. Smith, roll call, please.
On the minutes, Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Reports of county officials, the county executive were her designee. Mr. Sparber? Thank you. Finance committee, Mrs. Fatika.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The finance committee met at 4:00 on November 8th and agreed to put the following items on the agenda, under new business, items A, B, C, as well as item F, and then K through T. Under old business, we agreed to move items A through R to tonight's agenda. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions for Mrs. Fatika? Personnel committee, Mr. Horton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Personnel committee also met Thursday, November 8, 2018, and we agreed to put under new business, items D and E on tonight's agenda. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Horton? Reports of other members of council? Okay, seeing none.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Leon?
Like to move to make second readings of A, B, C, D, and E ordinances.
Thank you, Mr. Law, but also, Leon, could we...I don't know why I can't pronounce your name. I apologize. Could you want to maybe also add the two appointments that you could add to that motion?
Yes, I would. I would put under S and T, under old business, at the end. John Uliano is for Officer Children and Youth, and Richard Travers for the Advisory Board for HRC.
Moved by Mr. Leon. Mrs. Law, you still second?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. So any comments regarding the amendment of tonight's agenda as outlined by Mr. Leon? Mr. Smith, roll call, please.
On the motion, Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes. So with that, we will have a second reading of ordinance number 155, please, and title only.
A second reading of ordinance number 155, 2018, 55th, 2018, general fund budget, supplemental appropriation of $1,195 for PCOM safety improvement program grant.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Leon and seconded by Mrs. Fatika. Is there any comment? Mr. Smith, roll call, please.
On ordinance 155, Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes. Second reading of ordinance number 156, please, and title only.
A second reading of ordinance number 156, 2018, 14th, 2018, library fund budget, supplemental appropriation of $500 grant, 14-reading lounge supplies.
Moved by Mr. Leon.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Horton. Is there any discussion? Mr. Smith, roll call, please.
On ordinance 156, Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes. Second reading of ordinance number 157, please, and title only.
A second reading of ordinance number 157, 2018, 15th, 2018, library fund budget, supplemental appropriation of $10,000 from increase in anticipated library fine revenue.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Leon and seconded by Mr. Horton. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please. Mr. Smith.
On ordinance 157, Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes. Second reading of ordinance number 158, please, and title only.
A second reading of ordinance number 158, 2018, 2018, public health fund budget, revised expenditures of $43,096 for additional funding of the immunization program.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Fatika and seconded by Mr. Leon. Is there any discussion? Mr. Smith, roll call, please.
On ordinance 158, Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes. Second reading of ordinance number 159, please, and title only.
A second reading of ordinance number 159, 2018, 56th, 2018, general fund budget, supplemental appropriation of $21,548 immunization grant for transfer to public health fund.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Fatika and seconded by Mr. Leon. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please. Mr. Smith.
On ordinance 159, Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes. Possible adoption of resolution number 60, please, and title only.
Resolution number 60, 2018, approving the intergovernmental transfer agreement between the Pennsylvania Department of Human Services, the Office of Long-Term Living, and the County of Erie.
Moved by Mr. Leon?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Fatika. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please. Mr. Smith.
On resolution 60, Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes. Just to further things along, if we could, could I have a motion to approve the six appointments on our agenda tonight? It's a little out of order, but it's Donald Brown to the Erie County Care Management Board, Christine Mitchell to the Human Relations Commission, Jim Wanless to the Human Relations Commission, Ronald Clever to the Erie County Gaming Revenue... Excuse me, is it Ron? John Uliano to Office of Children and Youth Advisory Board and...
Richard Travers.
Richard Travers to the Human Relations Advisory Board. Mr. Horton, moved. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Leon. Is there any discussion or comment regarding those appointments? Mr. Smith, roll call, please.
On the six appointments, Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes, and without objection, Mr. Leon.
Yeah, I was going to move to put all the parcels from K through T as listed in our agenda for sale.
And just to have one vote, roll call, vote on that? Moved by Mr. Leon?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Horton. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Anderson.
The one parcel that had come into question, was that taken off of the agenda?
No, the issue is left up to the neighbor to pursue legal action if they wish. The person who's purchasing is doing it legally and properly.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thought you were going to make a last offer. Okay, any further discussion? Mr. Smith, roll call, please.
On the sale of parcels K through T, Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes. To just to further organize ourselves so we can work through the budget ordinances later in our meeting, we are going to recess at this time to have probably maybe 10 or 15 minutes, let's hope anyway, just to go through the rest of the action sheets that we will...I'll be voting on later, and we will reconvene at that time. But let the record reflect that 5:20, council stands in recess. Okay, let the record reflect that 5:54, council is back in session, and just to begin, there may have been some confusion as to when the meeting started, and weather being as it is, Mr. Barnes has arrived, and I will give him his five minutes at this time.
Thank you, Dr. Faust. My name's Randy Barnes, residing in Harbor Creek, and confusion was all on my end, so thank you again, but it was interesting. I happened to sit and listen to a little bit of your budget meeting. You talked about Erie Gaming Revenue money, and I thought it's good to have, I think, lots of oversight on that, because one of the things that's interesting is, you know, 572,000 of our tax dollars has been given to the Jefferson Society. This is the same Jefferson Society that I know 100,000 of that went to the study of the...was it going to be a tunnel or a bridge to Presque Isle? Because we that live on the east side, Harbor Creek, we can't get on the bus and ride, or we can't get to Presque Isle. So for 100,000 of our tax dollars from the Erie County Gaming Revenue Authority, 100 of that went for this study. It didn't cost that much for this study, but we helped fund the Jefferson Society to the tune of $572,000. Sounds like a pretty big amount. And you know what we get for that? We get a board of directors up there who happens to have...one of the board is former county executive, Joyce Sabacchio, thinks they shouldn't have to pay their taxes. My suggestion to places like that, raise your ticket price by a dollar and pay your taxes. Do the right thing. But if we're going to start giving tax exemptions to everybody, I think all of you, you probably do some county business at home, don't you? Probably quite a bit. I think all of you should get a tax exemption. Jefferson Society should get one. All of you should get one. I'm sure that the county clerk, he probably does some work at home. Mrs. Sparber? The solicitors? Kind of crazy, isn't it? But when you take things to extreme, and I was thinking a little bit more about, we talked about last...we last meeting about the theft by deception and how white-collar crime takes place and how...I think we had a good example of that not too long ago, in the past 24 months, in the district attorney's office, didn't we? How somebody was kind of like moving funds around and changing numbers and not really being real upfront with the public and end up personally benefiting financially through this white-collar crime, theft by deception, kind of thing. And that person was punished, and I don't think anybody's...think that's not right. But yet the seven of you, along with the county executive, will sit by and take a look at a check register...and I've brought this up several times, check register...the check was 2056 of March 8, 2017, where it said, "2018 fall tuition, February reimbursement, $5,604.38" to Mr. Perry Wood. Erie County Gaming Revenue money, okay? Then, less than a month and a half later, check number 2138 on April 24, 2017, we have an entry called "2017 professional development, $5,527." This is...this is an attempt to deceive the seven of you, the county executive, all the taxpayers. You know, funny, I said to one of the council people one time, I said, "It's not who you know. It's who you know that will let you get away with stuff." And the seven of you, along with the county executive, has been letting this go on way too long. Way too long. But how do...how did we take care of that person in the district attorney's office? She got punished. How do we take care of this person that deceived us? We buy him a membership to the Pennsylvania Society and send him off to New York City. We reward this kind of activity, but yet we look down on a person that cooks the...moves money around and deceives the public. Why is one different than the other? Is it because we've gotten such addicted to this gaming revenue money that no one wants to stand up and take a stand because they might lose their $600 for the church social? Or we might lose the $572,000 to the Jefferson Society?
Randy, thank you. Your time has expired.
Thank you very much, council.
I did give him his chance. If there's anybody from the public that wanted to go tonight, you're welcome to come forward. Seeing none, we will move on to old business, and first will be a second reading of ordinance number 137, and title only, please, Mr. Smith.
A first reading of ordinance number 137, 2018, 2019, debt service fund budget.
Moved by Mr. Leon. Seconded by Mr. Horton. Any discussion on this ordinance? There are no changes to it. Mr. Smith, roll call, please.
On ordinance 137, Mrs. Law? Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes. Second reading of ordinance number 138, please, and title only.
A second reading of ordinance number 138, 2018, 2019, employee fringe benefit fund budget.
Moved by Mr. Leon. Seconded by Mr. Horton. Is there any discussion? There are no proposed action sheets to this budget. Mr. Smith, roll call, please.
On ordinance 138, Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes. Second reading of ordinance number 139, please, and title only.
A second reading of ordinance number 139, 2018, 2019, health choices fund budget. So moved.
Moved by Mr. Leon and seconded by Mr. Fatika?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Leon.
Like to move to amend to include action sheets 1 and 2.
Moved by Mr. Leon and seconded by Mrs. Fatika. Is there any discussion regarding those two action sheets? Mr. Smith, roll call, please.
On the two action sheets, Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes. Mr...oh, yes, thank you. What to amend...a motion to amend the cover sheet to this number?
I have a motion to move...moved by Mr. Horton?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Leon. Any discussion regarding the amendment of the cover sheet to reflect the accurate budget figure? Mr. Smith, roll call, please.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes. Any further discussion on ordinance number 138 as amended? We are on 138, right? I have the right one?
39, Mr. Chairman.
139, I apologize. Any further discussion on 139? Final vote, Mr. Smith, roll call, please.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes. Second reading of ordinance number 140, please, and title only.
A second reading of ordinance number 140, 2018, 2019, mental health, intellectual disabilities fund budget. So moved.
Moved by Mr. Leon.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Fatika.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Leon.
Like to include action sheets 1 and 2.
Moved by Mr. Leon, amend with action sheets 1 and 2. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Fatika. Is there any discussion regarding those two action sheets? Mr. Smith, roll call, please.
On the addition of action sheets, Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes. No changes, correct? No dollar amount changes? So any further discussion on this ordinance as amended? Mr. Smith, roll call, please.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes. Second reading of ordinance number 141, please, and title only.
A second reading of ordinance number 141, 2018, 2019, drug and alcohol fund budget. So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Leon and seconded by Mrs. Fatika. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Leon.
Move to amend, include action sheets 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5.
Moved by Mr. Leon. Second at first, then we'll get to that.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Fatika. Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Number 5.
I'm withdrawing. I just answered my own question. Thank you.
All right, I would request a separate vote on action sheet number 5. I think, you know, many of us have been talking about how we don't want additional upgrades above the 3%, and voting no on that ordinance will achieve that in this particular instance. Any further discussion regarding...well, actually, let's have a vote on action sheets 1 through 4, please.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes, and then a separate vote on action sheet number 5. Mr. Smith?
On action sheet 5, Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
That would be no, right?
Mr. Leon?
No.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
No. Okay, any further discussion on ordinance number 141 as amended? Oh, we have to amend the cover sheet, I'm sorry. A motion to approve the cover sheet to the number Joe will give us?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Leon to amend the cover sheet?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Fatika. Any discussion on the amendment of the cover sheet? Mr. Smith, roll call, please.
On the amendment, Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Leon?
Yes.[1554.66]
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes. Any further discussion on ordinance number one forty-one as amended? Mr. Smith, roll call please.
Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes. Okay, moving on to ordinance number one forty-two, and title only, please.
A second reading of ordinance number one forty-two, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, children use services fund budget.
So move.
Moved by Mr. Leon and seconded by Mr. Fatika?
Mr. Chairman?
Mrs. Fatika, I apologize. Mr. Leon.
Uh, like to include action sheets one through twelve.
Move to amend with action sheets one through twelve. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Fatika. Any further discussion on those action sheets? And I would request a separate vote on action sheets five, six, and twelve. So, Mr. Smith, while we have an action sheet, uh, I'm sorry, a vote on action sheets one through four and seven through eleven.
On one through four and seven through eleven, Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes. And unless somebody else would want it otherwise, a separate vote on action sheets one, I'm sorry, five, six, and twelve combined. Mr. Smith.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Five, six, and twelve, no.
Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Uh, yes.
Dr. Faust?
No. Okay, move to amend the cover sheet with the number Joe will give us?
Fifty-four million, thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred ninety-eight dollars.
Do I have a motion to amend the cover sheet with that number? My, uh, moved by Mr. Leon. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Fatika. Any further discussion on the amendment of the cover sheet? Mr. Uh, Smith, roll call please.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Leon.
Uh, could you give us that figure again, Joe? The twenty-four million?
Fifty-four million, thirty-eight thousand, zero-three-eight, seven hundred ninety-eight dollars. Five, four, zero, three, eight, seven, nine, eight.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on this ordinance as amended? Mr. Smith, final roll call vote on ordinance number one forty-two, please.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes. Okay, moving on to ordinance number one forty-three, a second reading, please, and title only.
A second reading of ordinance number one forty-three, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, domestic relations fund budget.
So move.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Leon and seconded by Mrs. Fatika.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Leon.
Like to include action sheets one through seven.
Move to amend with action sheets one through seven by Mr. Leon. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Fatika. Is there any discussion regarding those action sheets? Mr. Smith, roll call vote on the action sheets one through seven, please.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes. And then a motion to amend the cover sheet with this number that Joe will give us?
Five million, two hundred forty-three thousand, four hundred thirty-five dollars.
Do I have a motion to amend? Uh, moved by Mr. Leon?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Fatika. Any questions? We are, I'm sorry, a discussion regarding the amendment of the cover sheet? Mr. Smith, roll call please.
Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes. Any further discussion on ordinance number one forty-three as amended? Mr. Smith, roll call please.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes. Okay, a second reading of ordinance number one forty-four, please, and title only.
A second reading of ordinance number one forty-four, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, planning fund budget.
So move.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Leon and seconded by Mrs. Fatika?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Leon.
Like to include action sheets one, two, three, and four.
Mr. Uh, actually, let's get a second on that first. Moved by Mr. Leon?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Fatika, Mr. Horton.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to separate items three and four.
Okay, so let's first have a, uh, a roll call vote on items, uh, action sheets one and two. Mr. Smith?
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes. Uh, regarding action sheets three and four, is there any further discussion or comment? I will only say that, uh, Mr. Horton, I think, has made some valid points regarding making sure we track, uh, fees, et cetera. I, I just think these initiatives are things that I would like to see going forward, and if we need to make amendments in the future, in future budgets, I'll believe, I'll certainly listen to those then, but I will be voting here. Mr. Smith, roll call on action sheets three and four, please. Actually, I'll be voting no. I take that back. I apologize.
Mr. Anderson?
Uh, no.
Mrs. Fatika?
No.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Leon? Mrs. Law?
No.
Mr. Rastetter?
No.
Dr. Faust?
No. Okay, so those action sheets are defeated. Uh, Mr. Uh, okay, we have a amendment to amend the cover sheet with the number Joe will give us?
Okay, nine million, four, four, four hundred forty-five thousand, six hundred eighty dollars.
So move, moved by Mr. Leon to amend with that number?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Fatika. Any discussion regarding the, uh, regarding the amendment of the cover sheet? Mr. Smith, roll call please.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes. Okay, a second reading of ordinance number one forty-five, please, and title only.
Mr. Chairman, I think we want one forty-four as amended.
I'm sorry. One final, any further discussion on ordinance number one forty-four, please, as amended? Mr. Smith, roll call please on ordinance one forty-four. Thank you. As amended.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes. Now a second reading of ordinance number one forty-five, please, and title only.
A second reading of ordinance number one forty-five, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, library fund budget.
So move.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Leon and seconded by Mrs. Fatika?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Leon.
Move to include action sheets one, two, three, and four.
Move to amend with action sheets one through four by Mr. Leon and seconded by Mrs. Fatika. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Mrs. Law?
I'd like to remove, uh, and vote on separately number four.
Okay. That, uh, a yes vote on that would, just to review, would remove the increase. Okay? Okay, uh, let's have a roll call on action sheets one through three first.
Mr. Leon?
Uh, yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes. Roll call, please, on action sheet number four.
Mrs. Law?
No.
Mr. Rastetter?
No.
Mr. Anderson?
No.
Mrs. Fatika?
No.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes. Action sheet is defeated. So move to amend the cover sheet with the number Joe will give us?
Six million, nine hundred forty-one thousand, nine hundred fifty-four dollars.
So move to amend the cover sheet with that number by Mr. Leon?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Fatika. Is there any discussion regarding action she, I'm sorry, this, uh, cover sheet? Mr. Smith, roll call please.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes. Any further discussion on ordinance number one forty-five as amended? Mr. Smith, roll call please.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes. Second reading of ordinance number one forty-six, please, and title only.
Second reading of ordinance number one forty-six, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, public health fund budget.
So move.
Moved by Mr. Leon and seconded by Mrs. Fatika. Mr. Leon.
Like to include, uh, action sheets one through eight.
Moved by Mr. Leon to amend with action sheets one through eight. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Fatika.
Mr. Chairman?
Mrs. Law?
I'd like to separate and vote on separately, uh, action sheet eight, please.
Okay, and action sheet eight, a yes vote there would remove that additional upgrade. Okay? Any further discussion? Actually, okay, let's, uh, go, uh, action sheets one through seven first, please, with a roll call vote. Mr. Smith?
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes. Now on action sheet number eight. Roll call, please.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Uh, no.
Mr. Rastetter?
No.
Mr. Anderson?
No.
Mrs. Fatika?
No.
Dr. Faust?
Yes. So that action sheet is defeated. Move to amend the cover sheet with this figure?
Eight million, two hundred eight thousand, three hundred sixty-eight dollars.
So move.
Moved by Mr. Leon?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Fatika. Is there any discussion regarding the amendment of the cover sheet? Mr. Smith, roll call please.
Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes. Any further discussion on ordinance number one forty-six as amended? Mr. Smith, roll call please on that ordinance.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes. Second reading of ordinance number one forty-six, please, and title only.
Second reading of ordinance number one forty-seven, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, public safety fund budget.
So move.
Moved by Mr. Leon?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Fatika.
Mr. Chairman, like to include action sheets one, two, three, and four.
Moved by Mr. Leon to amend with action sheets one through four. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Fatika?
Mr. Chairman?
Mrs. Law?
I'd like to separate and out, uh, number four and vote on it separately, please.
Okay, so let's have a roll call vote on, uh, action sheets one through three first. Mr. Smith?
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes. And on action sheet number four, a yes vote would, uh, uh, remove, uh, that increase. Okay, let's have an, uh, I'm sorry, a roll call vote on action sheet number four.
Mr. Anderson?
No.
Mrs. Fatika?
No.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
No.
Mr. Rastetter?
No.
Dr. Faust?
Yes. So that action sheet is defeated. Move to amend the cover sheet with this figure?
Uh, no change in the cover sheet.
No change, so, uh, we don't need to do that. So any further discussion on this ordinance as amended? Mr. Smith, roll call please.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes. Did you want to recess now or after we?
Why don't we skip thirteen, or twelve, and go thirteen, fifteen, fifteen, and get those out of the way?
Say that again?
Skip twelve, and then take liquid fuels, Pleasant Ridge Manor, Pleasant Ridge Manor depreciation.
Right, so for the moment, we'll, we will skip over the gaming funds? So we'll go to liquid, liquid fuels budget, which is a second reading of ordinance number, uh?
One forty-nine.
One forty-nine. Could we do one forty-seven?
Yes.
Yeah, you just did that, okay. I didn't cross it off, thank you. Okay, second reading of ordinance number one forty-nine, please, and title only.
A second reading of ordinance number one hundred forty-nine, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, liquid fuels fund budget.
So move.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Leon and seconded by Mrs. Fatika. There are no action sheets here, but is there any further discussion on the liquid fuels budget? Mr. Smith, roll call please.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes. Okay, let's have a second reading of ordinance number one fifty, please, and title only.
A second reading of ordinance number one fifty, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, Pleasant Ridge Manor fund budget. A second reading of ordinance number one fifty, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen Pleasant Ridge Manor Fund Budget.
Show move. Moved by Mr. Leon.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Fatika. Is there any discussion regarding this ordinance? There are no action sheets needed. Mr. Smith, roll call, please.
Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes. Okay, a second reading of ordinance number one fifty-one, please, in title only. Oh, we did just that, one fifty-two. Or did we do one?
No, one fifty-one.
One fifty-one, thank you.
A second reading of ordinance number one fifty-one, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen Pleasant Ridge Manor Depreciation Reserve Fund Budget. Show move.
Moved by Mr. Leon.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Fatika. There are no amendments and cover sheets here, or I'm sorry, action sheets here. So any further discussion on ordinance number one fifty-one? Mr. Smith, roll call, please.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes. And a second reading of ordinance number one fifty-two, please, in title only.
A second reading of ordinance number one fifty-two, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen Erie County Care Management Budget. Show move.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Leon and seconded by Mrs. Fatika. There are no action sheets here, so is there any discussion regarding this ordinance as presented? Mr. Smith, roll call, please.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes. Okay, you want to recess now to be able to take care of a few things? All right, just to be able to organize how we, how we voted so far, and what we plan to do with the general fund budget. It's going to need a little extra planning, so we're going to do that back in caucus, and we will recess, let the record reflect that, we recessed at six thirty-one. We'll be back as soon as we can. The council stands back in session, let the record reflect that seven, I'm sorry, seven eighteen, we came back into session, and we will pick up where we left off with the gaming fund, which is going back to... Now, a second reading of ordinance number one forty-eight, please, in title only, Mr. Smith.
A second reading of ordinance number one hundred forty-eight, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen Gaming Fund Budget. Show move.
Moved by Mr. Leon.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Fatika. Is there any discussion? Mr. Leon?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to include the action sheets one through fifteen, and elimination of action sheet thirteen.
Second.
Okay, so that would be moved to amend with action sheets one through twelve, and fourteen and fifteen. Moved by Mr. Leon and seconded by Mrs. Fatika. Any discussion on those action sheets? I would like a roll call separately on items number four, ten, eleven, and fourteen, and my reasons for that, I will tell you. I mean no disrespect to the members of council who proposed these. But the, the whole grants process just did not come off as I would have wished and would have liked. You know, we basically, for the most part, the administration's grants rubber-stanched what we had last year, and it really wasn't a whole lot of, a conversation, it really wasn't time, in many ways, to have a lot of conversation with some of these add-ins that were not in the original budget, which means that the administration declined, because I believe they all applied. I may be wrong, I'm one of them, but I think they all did. And I, I just think we need a, a better process, and for that, I'm only going to vote in the affirmative of the ones that we may have bumped up because they have proven over time that they're an organization that we need to fund, or at least it's worthy of us to fund. These other very well may do so, and I may not vote the same way next year, even if the process remains the same. But for this year, in case you're wondering why I'm asking for a separate vote on those four items, that's the reason why. So let's, Mr. Smith, have a roll call on items one through three, five through nine, twelve, four, and, I'm sorry, twelve and fifteen. That's one through three, five through nine, twelve, and fifteen.
On that motion, Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes. Okay, now a separate roll call vote on items number four, ten, eleven, and fourteen.
Separately or all?
Yes, all together, but a separate vote on those, on those four, please.
Mr. Chairman.
Mrs. Fatika.
I would like to section out number fourteen. So four, ten, eleven, I would like fourteen.
Okay, so you want, and that, you're, you're privileged to do that, by the way, so let's have, furthermore, we'll have a separate vote on numbers four, ten, and eleven first, and then per Mrs. Fatika's request, have a separate vote on number fourteen. So let's do four, ten, and eleven first, unless there's further requests to separate those. Okay, Mr. Smith, roll call, please, on item, action sheets number four, ten, and eleven.
Mrs. Fatika?
No.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes. Okay, so those action sheets pass, so they'll be included in the budget. And now a separate roll call, please, on item number fourteen.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
No. Okay, so those, that action sheet passes as well. So now, uh, we will move to amend the face sheet with this number?
Eight million, five hundred and sixty-two thousand, three hundred and fifty-seven dollars.
So that's eight, five, six, two, three, five, seven?
Correct.
Okay. Now, a motion moved by Mr. Leon, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Horton. Any discussion on the amendment of the cover sheet for the gaming fund?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Anderson.
I just want to applaud my colleagues for the actions that we've taken tonight, particularly in this area. What it shows is that this council, as we have had discussions throughout the year, has been serious about, and with their actions, has made an investment in human capital in this community, something that is needed, and something that I have stood up and supported through this entire year of council. And as I've said earlier, I applaud all of my colleagues tonight, as we join together to make an investment in human capital in the, within the city of Erie and Erie County, Pennsylvania. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Anybody else? And one thing I, I would be missing not saying, I think one of the wisest actions council has taken tonight is to move many of these grants to other organizations back into the general fund, where they were not initially funded in the administration's budget. That is in alignment with what council's urging was last year. I think if all of, I think in the end, which we should achieve next year, and we should pass an ordinance stating that grants to other organizations, it's required that they get funded out of the general fund. If we feel they are important to fund, I think it's more justified that they appear in the general fund, where if we have to raise taxes to fund it, it's more apparent to the public that that's what we had to do. That the gaming funds, in this particular sense, give us a false sense of security to use to fund these things, and the gaming fund, fund, as a result, by moving these funds tonight, not to overuse the word "fund", allows that nest egg to grow in the gaming funds, to fund future transformative projects that we can't normally handle in a regular budget. So I'm glad we are making that move tonight. Mr. Smith, roll, final roll call, I'm sorry, on the cover sheet of the gaming fund.
Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes. Any further discussion or comment regarding the gaming fund for two thousand nineteen, ordinance number one forty-eight? Mr. Smith, roll call, please.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes. Okay, we'll have a second reading now of ordinance number one fifty-three, in title only.
A second reading of ordinance number one fifty-three, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen General Fund Budget. Show move.
Moved by Mr. Leon and seconded by Mrs. Fatika.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Leon.
I'd like to include action sheets one through twenty-five.
Moved by Mr. Leon to amend with action sheets one through twenty-five.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Fatika. Yes.
One through twenty-two or twenty-five, we haven't done anything.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. That's the, that's the tax one. We could have done it for free.
Yeah.
I'll amend that to read, one through twenty-four.
Okay, uh, Mr. Leon's resolu, I'm sorry, amendment now is action sheets one through twenty-four. Do you second Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Seconded by Mrs. Fatika.
Mr. Chairman.
Mrs. Law.
I'd like to separate out number sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, and twenty-one to be voted on separately, please, as a group.
Twenty-one?
Say that again, sixteen, seventeen?
Sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, and twenty-one to be voted on separately, but as a group.
Okay, well, I would like to include twenty-two in that. We can still take them as a group?
Okay.
Okay. Any others? And I would also request a separate vote, a standalone vote, on item number ten, Mr. Smith.
On, on which number?
Number ten.
So sixteen to twenty-two?
Sixteen through nineteen, and then twenty-one and twenty-two will be one vote. And we'll have a separate vote on number ten as well. Are there any other requests for separation? So, Mr. Smith, first, a roll call on action sheets one through nine, eleven through fifteen, number twenty, and number twenty-four. Right? No, number twenty.
Twenty-three and twenty-four, twenty-four. Twenty, twenty-three.
One through nine, eleven through fifteen, number twenty, and can we vote on twenty-four yet?
No. Twenty-four is a change of the...
We can't vote on twenty-four as a group still?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I'm getting mixed up with the ones that we had in front of me. So there's consensus on those. Let's have a, a roll call on those action sheets, please.
Mr. Rastetter?
On which action sheets?
Just one more time for clarity, sorry. Action sheets one through nine, eleven through fifteen, number twenty, and number twenty-four.
Thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter? Mr. Anderson?
Are you done saying yes, Doug?
Okay, I'm done.
Yes.
I don't think Doug heard me.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes. A separate vote on action sheet number ten, please. My request for this stems from the fact, I think this should stay in a restricted line item. We don't have the money appropriated from the, the department yet. There, it can be very quickly released when that comes, and that would be my preference, so that's why I want a separate vote. Mr. Smith?
Mr. Anderson?
I'm voting yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
No. Okay, so that action sheet is passed and will be included, and now a separate vote on actions sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty-one, and twenty-two, and just to state for clarity, if you would vote yes, you would be eliminating those extra pay bumps, okay? So, Mr. Smith, roll call, please, on action sheets number sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty-one, and twenty-two.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yeah, no, I'm sorry, that's a no.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
No.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
No.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
So that passes, four, three.
Those won't be included.
Wait a minute. Mr. Chairman, explain that again to me. These were...
A yes vote eliminated the tax, the, the pay bump.
The noes carried it.
No, the yeses carried it. There's four yeses. So a motion to amend the cover sheet with this number that Joe gives us?
Well, wait a minute. No. You want to talk about where you're at?
Oh, we, yeah, all right. You want to recess then to, uh...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Before we do, I want to change my vote. I want that vote to, to be a no.
Okay.
I, you know, I'm somewhat confused on that.
All right, so those motions carry, or are voted down, I'm sorry. So they will be included in the budget?
So they'll be up for...
Yes. All right, you want to recess to talk about where we stand then? Okay, we apologize for those, but this one is a typical recess for us to decide how we'll pay for all of this, of what we've done tonight, so let the record, re-record show, at seven thirty-three, council stands are recessed. So, uh, we've passed one through twenty-two, correct?
We've passed one through twenty-four.
Four. Okay, so the, the motion we need on the table is to, uh, approve action sheet number twenty-five, which affects the real estate levy that we, this would be the, the increase in the real estate levy would increase by four million, zero fifty-one, three eighty-four. So could I have a motion to, Mr. Anderson?
Uh, just for clarity, I don't believe that we passed action sheet twenty-three. I think we skipped that, if we need to pass that. Pretty sure we skipped.
That was...
That's the transfer sheet.
I agree with Mr. Anderson. I don't think we passed it.
Well, we can do twenty-three, well, we probably want separate votes. So why don't we, why don't we first have a roll call vote on action sheet number twenty-three, because there's general consensus on that one? Actually, I take it back. We reconvened, let the record reflect, it was roughly, probably seven forty-seven tonight, and council stands back in session. Sorry, Dale. Okay, uh, so with that, let's have a roll call vote on the action sheet we did not address before we recessed, action sheet number twenty-three, which has to do with the general fund transfers. Mr. Smith?
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes. Okay, now a motion, please, to increase the real estate taxes by four million, zero fifty-one, three eighty-four. That's action sheet number twenty-five.
Show move.
Moved by Mr. Horton?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Fatika. Is there any discussion? I will just repeat what I said in the fact, that I think we achieve some good objectives here, and not to minimize a tax increase on anybody's household income. I certainly understand that it will be more affordable for some and not others, but we not only keep our fund balance where it was, but replenish it, so it has lots of positive financial impacts for us going forward. Uh, it helps us better manage next year, and also along with it, as I mentioned before, it, it replenishes where our gaming funds are, so if there are transformative projects that come up in the future, we are in better shape to participate in those initiatives as a result of doing that. So again, I don't want to minimize a tax increase on anybody, but I think in general, financially, that is the proper thing to do tonight. And so with that, a roll call, please, on action sheet number twenty-five.
Mr. Leon?
No.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
No.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes. Do we need to further amend the general fund, the cover sheet?
Cover sheet amended to one hundred and three million, nine hundred and forty thousand, seven hundred and thirty-four dollars.
Okay, so a motion, please, to amend the cover sheet of the general fund to reflect that figure?
Would you repeat that, Joe?
One million, zero nine four, seven three four, right?
One hundred and three, nine forty, seven three four.
That's why I should leave the numbers to the account. I apologize, I apologize. Do I have a motion to approve the cover sheet to reflect that figure?
Show move.
Moved by Mrs. Fatika and seconded by Mr. Horton. Any discussion regarding the amendment of the cover sheet? Mr. Smith, roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Leon?
No.
Dr. Faust?
Yes. Any further discussion on the general fund as amended?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Anderson.
I just want to mention, in the general fund section of our budget, through, through all of the numbers that are being passed around tonight in all of the different departments, there is a significant, but, but small number in comparison to the overall budget of a hundred thousand dollars that this council has put aside for a day reporting center. And I want to applaud councilperson Fatika, and particularly councilperson Carol Law, who have worked for many years in conjunction with the courts, with probation offices, with the district attorney's office, public defender's office, in making this a reality. And this council was asked to, to initially fund a day reporting center, and then council had asked Councilwoman Law to go to the courts to collaborate with them and, and seek matching funds from them to, to come up with half the amount, which she was able to do. And so I, I certainly want to applaud her, in particular, but this council in general, for stepping forward in a progressive manner. And our, our goal is, is twofold, or severalfold, but twofold in being, to make it easier and give the courts an, an option for those that are nonviolent offenders to have an opportunity to get back in society, and, and also for it to eventually become self-funded. So, and I, I don't want that to be passed over in, in the mix of all of this budget, so I just wanted to point that out this evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any further discussion regarding the general fund as amended?
Mr. Chairman.
Mrs. Law.
Uh, to tag on to what, uh, Mr. Anderson just had to say, I want to thank him also. He went to that meeting with me, with the courts, and we talked about the supervision fund that they have, and it actually, the total of it belongs to the adult probation. But because it's so large, they give eighty percent of that. It can total up to, it's collected partially, little bits by little bits, over the year. But if they didn't spend any of it, would total up to approximately eight hundred thousand dollars. But they do give eighty percent of that fund to the county for their general fund. They only keep twenty percent of those funds that actually belong to adult probation. In the past, they've spent the money on scanners and cameras, security measures, protective vests, autos, and because the county didn't have the money to renovate their floor that they are on, and the carpets had holes...
they are on, and the carpets had holes and every, and there was quite an awful need for renovations up there, they spent the money themselves out of that account totaling right around $125,000 to save the county that much money. Well, this day reporting center will house the DUI program, which will generate approximately $300,000 over the year, and then in turn be self-sufficient for the place that they are located. And they will have about $130,000 of that will be for employees, and $60,000 is, at this point, is going to be set aside for rent for them to be in this area. And it's going to be a wonderful thing for the fact that the courts then in turn can, instead of putting these people in jail, they can sentence them to this day reporting if they're nonviolent, nonsexual criminals. They can sentence them to this. This is going to save us about $50 a day per person. And so it's going to be a wonderful benefit to Erie County, and I know that everybody understands that I have been on board, trying to accomplish this for years, and finally have the votes and understanding that this is a necessary need for Erie County. And I want to thank my colleagues for voting to have this in position for us for next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Law. Anybody else? Okay. Mr. Horton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This budget, although not perfect, and it won't please everyone, I think that it sets Erie County up to be continually good stewards of the public trust when it comes to their finances. In addition to the day reporting center, we've also instilled another $50,000, installed another $50,000 into the summer jams program with the intention of lowering the age limit to 15, make it from 15 to 21. We just feel that still, with all the things that we support, our human capital is by far and away the most important, and we don't invest enough, and this is just a small pittance of what we hope to do moving forward. That concludes my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Horton. Anybody else? Okay, we need a final vote on ordinance number 153 as amended.
Mr. Rastetter.
Yes.
Mr. Anderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika.
Yes.
Mr. Horton.
Yes.
Mr. Leon.
No.
Mrs. Law.
Yes.
Dr. Faust.
Yes. Second read of ordinance number 154, please, in title only.
A second reading of ordinance number 154, 2018, the 2019 real estate tax levy.
I have a motion on the floor to?
So move.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Horton and seconded by Mrs. Fatika. Do I have a motion to set the tax levy amended?
5.71 mils, or 0.571.
Say that again, I'm sorry?
5.71 mils.
To amend the tax levy to now be for Erie County, 5.71 mils.
So move. 5.71, the last paragraph.
Of the title, you mean, and everything?
No, it's, I forget what it says.
Mr. Chairman, the first sentence is levied at a rate of, it would be 5.71.
We'll include that.
Mils on each dollar of assessed value, or a rate of 0.571.
Right, okay. So that has been moved by, I apologize, Mr. Horton, and seconded by Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Okay, any further discussion on that? Okay, move to, I'm sorry, roll call on amending ordinance number 154, please.
Mr. Anderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika.
Yes.
Mr. Horton.
Yes.
Mr. Leon.
No.
Mrs. Law.
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter.
No.
Dr. Faust.
Yes. Okay, now a final vote. Any further discussion on ordinance number 154? Final vote on ordinance number 154 as amended, Mr. Smith.
Mrs. Fatika.
Yes.
Mr. Horton.
Yes.
Mr. Leon.
No.
Mrs. Law.
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter.
No.
Mr. Anderson.
Yes.
Dr. Faust.
Yes. Before we adjourn tonight, I just want to, one, thank my colleagues for, you know, the public, I don't think ever really fully understands the amount of time that we've put into the budget. Some members may be a little bit more than others due to work constraints, et cetera, but I think everybody puts in quite a bit of time that should be recognized and appreciated. Our staff, for sure, Doug and Danae and Lana, were helping out just on a day-to-day basis of getting this information that we need and maybe clarifying some questions. Tracy and Jim, as always, no matter what differences we may have with the administration on the budget when it comes down, we've always had a good working relationship to get it through on time thereafter. Sam, our new finance person, has probably had his eyes wide open tonight. It is a different process, and I know some of the newer members, I kidded them, but[1762.73]